Good evening, welcome to the Menlo Park City Council Meeting for March 4th, 2014. At this time, we'll go ahead and do roll call. Councilmember Rich Klein is present. Councilmember Peter Otaki is to my right. My name is Ray Mueller. It's my privilege to serve as your mayor this year. To my left is Vice Mayor Katherine Carlton. To her left is Councilmember Kirsten Keith. Down to the left off the podium, off the dais, excuse me, is our Assistant City Manager, Starla Joan Robinson. Seated next to her is our City Manager, Alex McIntyre. To his left is our City Attorney, Bill McClure. And down to the right, to our far right off the dais, is our City Clerk, Pam Aguilar. If you have public comment cards that you would like to make this evening with respect to any of the items or an open public comment, please fill out your card and bring it to Ms. Aguilar. At this time, we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we have the presentation of a proclamation. So I'd like to introduce everybody to Carolyn Hoskins. It's been our custom this year to honor our hometown heroes here in Menlo Park at the start of each council meeting. For those of you, everyone probably knows this, but February is Black History Month. And for those of you who haven't had yet the opportunity, I really encourage you, although we're in March now, to travel down to our Ms. Hoskins Pop-Up Black History Museum, which is located in our Bellhaven community. It is a, I had the good fortune of going there with my son Maximilian for a tour. And it is amazing, the collection that she has brought together. It's just, it's inspiring. There's been over 200 students to go through the museum, and it is, it has inventions listed in who invented the invention. It has countless collections of entertainers, of athletes, of political, social leaders. It's just, it's really, it's breathtaking, and I am, and I am told that she has even more in storage already. So we're actively searching for space right now to house that collection permanently. But it really, truly is a can't miss. And I thought it appropriate at the end of February now in March that we honor Carolyn for her work bringing that to Menlo Park. So I have a proclamation to read to her now. Whereas 15 years ago Carolyn Hoskins, widow of Robert "Bob" Hoskins, a former San Francisco 49ers defensive tackle, founded the Dominique Hoskins Black History Museum and Learning Center 12 years ago, excuse me. And whereas the museum was named after her grandson, now 21, who in tackling an elementary school assignment years ago asked whether there were African-Americans other than Dr. Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks who did anything. And whereas the question inspired Hoskins to amass the collection that comprises the museum. And whereas thanks to Carolyn, the peninsula has a fantastic resource for learning about the countless African-Americans who have shaped the history and culture of the United States. And whereas Carolyn continues to be motivated by the schoolchildren who come through the museum, bright-eyed in learning about the great contributions of African-Americans to our country and state. And whereas over 200 school-aged children have visited the museum in Menlo Park in the month of February 2014. And whereas Carolyn was recently recognized by State Senator Jerry Hill with a Quiet Hero Award to honor individuals who have made sustained significant contributions to improve the community, now therefore be it resolved that I, Ray Mueller, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, recognize Carolyn Hoskins and express sincere gratitude for not only providing a resource and gem to the City of Menlo Park, but also for educating youth in the greater community by highlighting the achievements of African-Americans. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and offer the mic to Carolyn.
Thank you so much. This is such a great honor, and I really, really encourage everyone to please come and take a look at the museum, because African-Americans have contributed so much to this great country, and we don't want it just to be in February. So again, thank you for this great honor. I appreciate it so very much.
Don't go anywhere. Okay, so now we're going to go ahead and move on to Item B on the agenda, our Commission Committee Vacancies, Appointments and Reports. Item B1, this evening, we have a Bicycle Commission Quarterly Report on the Status of their Two-Year Work Plan, and our Chair, Greg Clingsborne, will make a verbal report. I forgot to turn around the podium, I apologize.
Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Not too much to report since the last time. We are, have started our work on our new two-year work plan. So we're in the early stages of that, since the items on our last one have mostly been checked off. We have also, as I mentioned in my last report, been discussing both with and separately from the Transportation Commission about how to streamline our commissions potentially. And we've also have recommended the cyclist anti-harassment ordinance be considered by Council. So that's, that's in your hands, if that's something that you'd like to consider. Only other thing to report is this will be my last report for a while. I'll be termed out of the, of the commission starting next month. So we'll be, I'll definitely still be coming to some of the meetings and coming to some of your meetings, but this will be the last time in this role. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Clingsborne. Do we have any questions, Mr., no? Councilmember Klein?
I have a question, but I do want to say thank you, because you've been fantastic and have been striking just the right chord on leading and pushing the ideas through, but also allowing for there to be a lot of concerted discussion around these things. And you've actually accomplished quite a bit, so I really do want to congratulate you on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Councilmember Keith?
I also wanted to say thank you for all your hard work on the Bicycle Commission. I know I've been a liaison, and I think you've done a great job. I think the whole group is really, really works well together, and I'm looking forward to seeing the anti-harassment ordinance, and we'll miss you.
Thank you.
I miss your input. So maybe you'll want to be on another commission.
It's not, not out of the realm of possibility.
Okay, good.
And we'll go ahead and, Councilmember Otaki.
Yeah, and I also want to add my thanks for your hard work and hopefully future work on perhaps on another commission or certainly continued involvement with the city. So thank you.
And Vice Mayor Carlton?
I wanted to thank you, too. The curse of time limits. It's a shame that you'll be stepping down, and I hope we will be seeing you again soon.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, okay.
Thank you all.
And now we have a report from our Transportation Commission, a quarterly report on the status of their two-year work plan. Chair Bianca Walzer will make the verbal report. Walzer, excuse me, Bianca.
Good evening. Is this in the right spot? Okay. Like Greg Clingsborne, we also have a fairly light report tonight, not a whole lot to, new issues to discuss. We have six subcommittees right now. The first one is the Downtown Business, Menlo Park Signage and Branding Subcommittee, which we revived. It had gone dormant a bit after both of our commissioners had moved on to greener pastures. And so we revived that, and we have been working with a member of the Bicycle Commission, but we've just had one meeting so far, so not a whole lot to report. The Subcommittee on Potential Revisions to the NTMP, we've submitted a report to staff and are waiting for feedback from staff. So we'll be hopefully talking to you about that in the near future. The High School Project Subcommittee Regarding Transportation Relation Challenges, we, we completed that once. It was a huge success, and so we decided to do it again. And this year, we are including Menlo Atherton High School in addition to Sacred Heart and Menlo School. So I think that'll be really great to have a third school participating in the challenge this year. But again, that, that's in progress. The Comprehensive Review of the Streetlight Program, there is a draft policy that is currently being reviewed by staff, so we hope to be bringing that forward again in the near future. The El Camino Real Traffic Studies Subcommittee, as you know, there was recently a consultant selected by Council. Since the, since the Subcommittee helped participate in choosing that, there hasn't been any progress on that, any, any new action. And I, we don't also have anything to update on the General Plan Transportation Issues Subcommittee at this point. So that's, that's all we have for now.
Thank you, Chair Walzer. Do we have any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. See you in a few months.
See you in a few months. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and announce at this time that we are going to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of Frank Carney. So we're going to go ahead now and move on to our public comment. Under Public Comment Number One, the public may address the Council on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under the Consent Calendar. Each speaker may address the Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore the Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. We have one card tonight, and that was from Phil Mazur, Mazura, who is our, one of our Transportation Commissioners.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner Mazura.
Good evening. Mayor Mueller, Vice Mayor Carlton, City Council Members, thank you for listening. As Mayor Mueller said, my name is Phil Mazur. I'm one of your Transportation Commissioners. I'm here tonight speaking on my own behalf, not as a Transportation Commissioner, and I'd like to address you on the potential merger of the Bicycle and Transportation Commission that you'll be considering in the coming weeks. Because I only have three minutes, and I want to be respectful of your time, I'm going to talk about a single issue that I think you should consider, but I'll provide you with some further input that the City Council has requested through the Commission Report that will be forthcoming. So I'd like to take you back just a few weeks ago. Consider yourself sitting in Mr. Powell's AP Environmental Science class over at Menlo Atherton High School. 25 students settled around this map, a map of Menlo Park that Jesse and Nikki were gracious to provide, as students pointed out where they lived and the routes that they took to school. A teenager from East Menlo Park was especially enthusiastic, highlighting his route with a yellow highlighter and marking a trouble spot where he nearly had a collision with a car. It took a lot of work outside the commission to make those inroads at MA and to include them in the High School Outreach Project Subcommittee. Let me take you back a few months ago, when the members from the Bicycle and Transportation Commission gathered at City Hall to interview consultants for the El Camino Real Study. It was a productive session. We all learned a lot, and we got a lot of different viewpoints from the four Bicycle and Transportation Commissioners that were there. Are there things that the commissions can do to make themselves more efficient? Absolutely. We can coordinate our agendas, and we can have joint meetings when necessary. But I think the efforts to merge the commissions fundamentally misunderstand the commission's role in the larger picture of the city government. The commissions now are an advisory body, and I think they should be, a place to help the Council make better decisions, more informed decisions. When fully staffed, the commissions have 14 total members, seven from each side. Each commissioner brings their own expertise and insight, operating in their own spheres of influence. We're from different neighborhoods, social circles, business circles, all here in Menlo Park. These diverse viewpoints come together to provide you with more thoughtful recommendations. If we disagree, great, you're going to get a diverse set of viewpoints, and you're going to be able to make a better informed decision. A merged commission with 14 members is going to be too wieldy to operate, so it will likely trickle down to a smaller number of missioner, commissioners when merged, either through attrition or reappointment. You're going to lose citizen engagement. You're going to lose the valuable time of your commissioners outside the meetings in the name of efficiency that can be achieved by other means. So I'd encourage you to consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mazura, and thank you for working on the High School Outreach Program.
My pleasure.
Okay, we're going to go ahead now and move on to our Consent Calendar. Does anyone want to pull any of the items on the Consent Calendar? Vice Mayor Carlton?
I had a quick question for Mr. Taylor regarding D1.
Okay.
Same with me. Question on it.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, could you join us?
I'll move to approve D2.
Is this going to be a long? I don't think we're pulling it. I think it's just a quick question.
Okay.
We'll see.
With regard to the On-Call Plus Route for the shopping shuttle that you have, talk me through when the shuttle picks up Mrs. Pringle and takes her to Safeway. Traditionally, the shuttle then waits for Mrs. Pringle to finish and then takes Miss Pringle home. Is that the way it will continue with the, the new On-Call Plus service?
Yeah, I'm going to have Nikki Nagaya, who oversees that program, answer some of the detailed questions related to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question. And in general, yes, it will still work the same, but there are instances today where the shuttle waits for a significant period of time or transports multiple riders to one particular area. And so instead of waiting for that longer duration of time, it will be able to do additional trips in that downtime period.
Okay, because my concern is this. The 295 bus was canceled because of too few riders, but I see that there are a significant number of riders that use it for shopping and for obvious reasons. My concern is that the bus might pick up Mrs. Pringle, take her to Safeway, and be waiting for her. Meanwhile, Mrs. Jones over here is standing on the corner waiting for an hour or more because she doesn't realize that the bus is busy with Miss Pringle over here. And the way it's stated here, the bus will continue a route going around until called, and then when it's called, it's gone for an hour. And there's no way of the people waiting to know that the bus is, is not coming for a long period of time. And that just seems logistically questionable. I don't know if you, have you thought about how this is going to be addressed? That you've got one person waiting for an extended period of time while it's doing this? Or is it possible to drop them off and say, I'm going to drop you off and picking you up in 30 minutes and continue? Or how are you, how are you going to manage that?
So we do have a very close working relationship with the driver, and then the driver also knows many of the regular riders on a personal basis. And so every week when the shopper shuttle is scheduled to run, they essentially, each rider is required to call in and request that they get picked up and then dropped off after their trip. So the driver in advance of any given day will know who is scheduled to ride and be able to work with those residents so that they're not waiting for a significant period of time. And then they will understand kind of how much time will be left in excess on the route when they would have traditionally had some downtime, and then be able to do a little bit of fixed route or circulator service in that downtime.
Okay, are we going to have a lot more discussion with, with Councilmember? Okay, so let's go ahead and move Item D, D2 at this time.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, let's, all those in favor?
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, back to questions about Item D1. Council, Vice Mayor Carlton?
So my question is, does it make more sense to have an on-call bus where everybody just calls and the bus goes to them? We've just said that we're having targets for lowering greenhouse emissions, and yet we're telling a bus to go around in circles picking up people who can call in. They can schedule when they go to Safeway rather than waiting on the corner. Also, there's an expense in gas in the downtime driving around. Does it make more sense just to keep it as an on-call service where people can schedule it?
Yeah, I think that's a great, great question and something that Samtrans has also been exploring. So they, just this year rolled out two pilot services that operate similar to what we're proposing for the shopper shuttle in San Carlos and one on the coast, I believe in Pacifica. And so this will be modeled after those systems that are pilots, and it's something that we will evaluate and continue to monitor with each cycle of funding. We just thought that at this point, given that the service of the 295 was reduced, that this is a good time to look at options and how we can enhance the service and potentially look at the cost of the benchmark. Because we're slightly over the benchmark that Samtrans set for the cost of the service per rider, we're looking at ways to, to attract new riders that don't currently use the system in the on-call form. And we think that this might be a way that we can attract some, some additional riders.
Okay. But you say that the, the bus driver tends to know them, so it would be easy to do outreach and say, we're not going to just pick you up, you need to book this. So you're saying that you want to keep the hybrid solution for a year and then review its success at the end of the year?
We continuously evaluate the programs. We get monthly ridership data from the, the bus drivers that operate the service, and we evaluate that, that information on a rolling basis and make changes as we need to. So if we do roll this out and it doesn't seem to be effective, it's something that we can continue to monitor and change.
Okay, because I'm concerned about the cost, I'm concerned about the emissions, and I'm concerned about people, the, the non-communication of any schedule to people, and, and the bus going off with, with other individuals for maybe an hour and having very unhappy people waiting for extended periods of time. So I'm, to me, this is kind of a red flag of...
So one, one point that I think is important on the, the cost question, though, is right now, we pay for the, the total number of hours of service regardless of whether the bus is, is sitting and waiting for Miss Pringle in front of Safeway or not. And so we're trying to find a way to maximize the efficiency of the route. We don't pay directly for fuel, but I do recognize the, the emissions concern, that we don't want to have it circulating empty for an extended period of time. But when it is idle and not being used, we think this might be a valuable way to, to use that, that resource.
Okay, so all that being said, this is a pilot program, and it will be evaluated. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Otaki.
So I simply want to ask, because I very much support the program, I think it provides a valuable service. I simply want to ask, how do, how do we more, how do we publicize it more? I don't think that many people know about it. I don't know if there are different ways that we can help to publicize it through an occasional posting on Nextdoor so that a residence might, you know, it might raise awareness for them, or, or, you know, flyers at, at the train station, or, you know, trying to target commuter audiences. But I certainly wanted to encourage it, because I do think it's a very helpful service. I just would love to see the ridership numbers increase, so, so I just wanted to encourage you to, to think about how to improve the ridership, so.
Absolutely. It's something that we're, we're continuously evaluating, ways to, to attract new riders. We do have about 80,000 trips that we, we serve each year, which is a pretty significant number for the program. But we do target outreach to the business community that are served by the, the commuter shuttles in particular, and then the, the shopper shuttle and the midday shuttles as well get targeted outreach. We have a few business partnerships in the Bellhaven neighborhood that have been very successful in, in getting the word out to the community in that area, and then also to the, the senior housing developments on the west side in Sharon Heights where we serve a lot of the shopper shuttle riders. Also, we have good relationships in getting the word out. And they, many of those folks also wrote support letters for the application, which was very helpful in, in submitting this round. But something that we are continuing to evaluate for, for ways that we can outreach to, to the community to get the word out.
Great, thank you. And I just wanted to add, my, my mother used this shuttle service for many years, so I know how important it is for, for seniors. So thank you.
Councilmember Klein. Great, yeah?
I'll move approval of D1.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and just read off what our public hearings were for the record. We had a public hearing, Item E1, Appeal to the City Council, the Planning Commission's Decision on the Property Located at 1015 Atkinson Lane. The appellant has withdrawn the appeal, so there will be no public hearing on this item. Item E2 was to consider a request for Conditional Development Permit Amendment and Heritage Tree Removal Permits for the Demolition of Existing Recreation Building, the Construction of a New Recreation Building and Leasing Office, Facade Improvements to the Existing Apartment Buildings and Landscaping Located at 350 Sharon Park Drive. At the project applicant's request, this item is continued to a later date. There will be no public hearing on this item at this time. We're moving on now to our regular business, Item F1, Approve an Agreement Between the City of Menlo Park and Facebook to Fund a Police Officer for a Three-Year Term with a Two-Year Option for Facebook and Adding an Additional Full-Time Police Officer Position to the Department for the Duration of the Agreement. We now have a staff presentation by Commander Dave Bertini and our Chief, Robert Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff and community. Before we start with this staff report, I just wanted to say a couple of, a couple of words. One being, I'd like to commend this council for constantly striving to make Menlo Park a better, stronger and safer community. I'd like to thank my staff and city staff for all the work they've gone into and do on a daily basis to make sure your goals are accomplished. And one of the things that has come up as an opportunity that I think is a benchmark in private-public partnerships, and in the 28 years that I've been in law enforcement, I've yet to work with a stronger community partner than Facebook. Since my arrival... Since my arrival, they've never asked for anything from us as a police department. They've only asked what we can do to help make this a safer community for everyone. They've placed no restrictions on the position that we're going to present before you. And again, like us, I think they saw an opportunity to increase our accessibility to the community of Bellhaven by having an officer permanently staffed out of the new service center. I think they saw an opportunity of how we can increase visibility by having an officer dedicated for high-visibility patrol and working with our schools and our major businesses in the area. And I think they also saw a strong ally in putting a position in place that could help reconnect our at-risk youth with their schools and get them re-engaged in a positive way rather than a negative way. And also, the primary role of this officer, or one of their primary responsibilities, will be working with the schools and the businesses in the area and increasing their security protocols and enhancing their safety plans, which is something we've been working on for quite some time. So with that, I will turn it over to Commander Dave Bertini to present the staff report.
Thank you, Chief Johnson.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers, I'm here with some exciting news about a great public-private collaboration and partnership that the chief just kind of mentioned. The genesis of this discussion about collaboration was from the council on the Bellhaven visioning that came out about what are we going to do to better serve the community in the Bellhaven. Late last year, we had discussions with surrounding agencies and school districts specifically about reviving the School Resource Officer Program. Many of you may know that about a decade ago, the federal government did a lot of funding of SRO programs, and a lot of agencies had robust SRO programs in existence. But because of the economy and those funding grants dried up. So we were in discussions with our neighbors, with school districts, about what could we do to revive that program? And one of the things we talked about from Menlo Park's perspective is we really wanted to have something on the outside of the schools that would work directly with the schools, someone who would be in charge of maybe a truancy program that tried to deal with our daytime crime rate, which had to do with a lot of truants out on the street. And the schools really, really wanted something like that. But of course, we kind of threw our hands up and said, "Well, we don't really have the funding to do that right now." And it just so happens that about two or three weeks later, the chief and I met with representatives from Facebook, and they told us that they wanted to help any way they could with the safety, enhancing safety and being a good neighbor with not only the Bellhaven, but the entire city of Menlo Park. So we basically asked them, well, we have this idea of having this community safety police officer, which would work very closely with the schools and the school resource officers, that would really enhance the safety. And they came back to us and said they would be willing to collaborate and fund a new position that would be this proposed sworn police officer who is a community safety police officer. If approved, the duties of this position are listed in attachment A of the draft agreement, which you all have. But some of the highlights of what this officer would be doing, they would be a first responder to major emergencies to schools or large business campuses. They'd be a liaison with schools and businesses to create emergency plans, assist in conducting drills and overall security reviews. They would create and run a truancy program in collaboration with the school districts. And they would liaison with schools and businesses for specific safety and crime concerns that they may have, and that's throughout the city of Menlo Park. The officer will be housed, and that officer's office will be at the new Neighborhood Service Center substation that we are hoping is going to be open in the next 90 days or so. And when we talk about the impact on city resources, Facebook has graciously agreed to fund the position to the maximum of $200,000 a year with a cap of $600,000 for three years, with a two-year extension if Facebook deems it a good program and it's working. So this could be up to a five-year agreement if approved. What we would be doing from the police department perspective is evaluating the program periodically and, of course, at the end of the three years to see whether or not Facebook wanted to continue with the agreement and fund it for that extra two years. And tonight, I'm happy to say that we have a representative from Facebook here, Carla Gray, who's sitting in the audience and who could answer any questions from the Facebook perspective if you had any. So that's really about it, and I'm going to turn it over back to the chief if you had any other comments.
No direct comments, just if you have anything you'd like us to clarify, we can.
Well, the first thing we should do is, I'm going to go ahead and take public comment at this time. So if there is any public comment, which there's none. So now, are there any clarifying questions? And I see Councilmember Klein's microphone on.
Just, and thank you for the presentation, and obviously, thank you, Facebook. generosity just speaks for itself. How are we going to measure this, the success of this? Is there a benchmark you plan to use? Is there a way to communicate with Facebook what we're trying to get done and then show that effectiveness? Do you have that, an idea of how to do that?
Yeah, I actually think it's because of the way we've designed it. I think it's going to be something that's very measurable. One is, we're going to be able to see if there's a correlation with reconnecting at-risk truants back to school and re-engaging. We'll be able to track that number, those contacts, the referrals that are made. Also be able to see if there is a correlation in the reduction of crime. We don't consider truancy a crime in and by itself, even though technically you could. I like to see it more as a gateway crime, if any, that leads into other issues. But I think it's a great opportunity for us and this officer to reconnect those at-risk truants back into the school role. So we'll be able to measure that. We'll be able to measure the amount of safety plans that are devised out of this program. We have been developing safety plans for our schools, and we've been working towards 100% compliance in doing that, even though there's no direct order requiring us to. And what I'm referring to in safety plans are for those most violent types of attacks that come upon our most sacred ground, the schools. You know, we have emergency plans in place for natural disasters, but not necessarily man-made assaults. And this is what we want safety plans in place for. In this day and age, it's something that's expected from our community. So we're working towards that, and we've been doing that. But beyond our schools, as we know, these types of attacks are also starting to occur on major businesses or just in the workplace. So we feel it's our responsibility to develop a similar plan for businesses as well. They're very time-intensive plans. I've been having a sergeant do it as a collateral, but it's almost a full-time job just to work on developing those plans. We have a huge business community within this city, and I would like to have a safety plan in place for every one of those businesses so we would be prepared to respond appropriately and effectively, and more importantly, as efficiently as possible. So we'll be able to measure that by the number of plans that were developed over these three-year period. And again, the crime association and the correlation, I do think, will be interesting to see is as we address truancy on a more proactive basis, whether we see a decrease in property-related crimes, which is usually where the correlation is.
Do you think that based on, I guess, two questions. The first one will be, will this position naturally feed into what our goal has been to try to have a community-wide emergency response plan that we've been working on, that, let's see, we've talked to Palo Alto about, and the fire district has been kind of leading out on that? Would that feed into that?
Yeah, I actually think it's going to feed in very well. Part of the responsibility, and we've already discussed this with our neighboring agencies, this officer will not be solely dedicated to the confines of Menlo Park, especially when addressing truance and reaching out. If Menlo Atherton says, "Hey, we have three individuals that we're trying to track, but they live in East Palo Alto." We're not going to stop them at the East Palo Alto line to reach out and contact those neighbors. So again, and not just that, but the emergency plans going into that question is that there's that natural relationship in bringing in more of the businesses online that will be able to help work with that. So, yes.
And the last question is, how unique is a position like this in a police force of a community this size?
Well, again, as Commander Bertini, I mean, in the '90s, we had quite a few of them. You know, this kind of position was well-funded through COPS grants back in the 1990s, but that funding has become very difficult to find, if it can be found at all. So this specialized position is relatively unique in the fact that we're expanding the responsibilities, not inside the school, but outside the school, working with the kids on the outside to reconnect them and with the businesses. So in that sense, it is somewhat unique.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Councilmember Keith.
Thank you for your presentation tonight on this issue. And really, Ms. Gray, thank you for being here tonight, too, from Facebook. We couldn't have a better partner in our community. So thank you so much. I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask about the funding for the position. I read that it's up to $200,000. And I had a couple of questions for Mr. McIntyre about this. So, Mr. McIntyre, would you mind filling us in? I think that there's a change in the amount.
Certainly. I've had an opportunity to talk with Facebook officials today about the cap, the annual cap for the five years. And recognizing, when we did a closer analysis of some of the costs, I got some concerns that the cap would be insufficient to cover the full cost, the full carrying cost of a police officer over five years. So I talked to Facebook officials, and they really did agree. The concept always was for Facebook to carry the freight for each of these positions, or, excuse me, for the position for each year. So they've agreed to raise the cap, but we don't have that agreement in front of us today. So if the council chooses to approve this agreement tonight, I would recommend that you do so condition that the cap be raised from $200,000 a year to $220,000 a year, keeping in mind that the number will always be the lesser of the two numbers used, either the actual cost, if it's under $200,000, or, excuse me, $220,000, or the $220,000.
Okay, and then just, I'm going to follow up a little bit on that. One of the reasons this came up was because of pension issues. Is that right?
Not pension issues, per se. One of the reasons it came up is the cost for the pensions over the next five years. We cannot specifically anticipate what they'll be, but we do know they're going to go up. PURS just announced that they have, will be imposing upon us mortality rates that are going to drive our cost for services up. And I just wanted to make sure we were able to capture some of those costs in the latter years of this contract.
And then one of the things that we discussed also is that after the three-year term, that we would look at that increase to whatever it needed to be when we had more clarity about the actual costs.
Right. And without speaking for Facebook, I think Facebook's intention is to carry, to pay basically the full freight of a police officer in Menlo Park.
Thank you for that information. I appreciate it. And thank you to Facebook again.
Councilmember Otaki.
So I think, first of all, I just wanted to mention to Chief Johnson, Commander Bertini, and Carla Gray, certainly, thank you. I think this is a wonderful example, Chief Johnson, as you mentioned, of a public-private partnership. And it has, and what I see it is a win-win-win. So it's a win for the city because I know your staff, Chief Johnson, has been looking at, how do we staff the new community services center in Bellhaven? How are we going to have the resources to be able to do that? Now there's an answer to that. It's a win for Facebook to have a local officer that's fairly close to campus that is within a couple of minutes and improve any sort of response times. But most importantly, it's the community benefits by being able to address issues locally in that community, in the area, whether it's regarding encouraging students to stay in school or to respond to situations. So I just think it's a great program, and I appreciate the work on it.
Thank you. I'd just like to follow that up with, I mean, it is a win-win-win, exactly like you stated, but it's a win for the broader community as well. I mean, we forget about some of the other businesses in the area that have been great supporters to us as well, that will also benefit by having that officer in close proximity and working directly with those businesses. And that just always hasn't happened. We haven't had the resource to do that, and now we will.
Vice Mayor Carlton.
Hi. First of all, I want to thank Facebook, and I really appreciate the concern that Facebook has had for education. I know that Zuckerberg himself has volunteered in the classroom, and it does my heart good to see a company really getting involved in the community and even personally on the level of the CEO. I saw that the officer who will be at the community services centers, it's like a satellite police station office, will be working the traditional four-days, 10-hour shift. Who will be there the other three days?
If you remember, going back to our original presentation for staffing of that, we still have built in there the code enforcement officer, the community service officers, the CSOs, that we had planned on being there the Monday through Friday, or actually, Monday through Saturday, because we have the overlap. This is going to be, you know, so they're still, we're still planning on using them down there as well. This is just going to be a dedicated sworn officer in addition.
And at the end of the five years, we have the option of possibly renegotiating with Facebook, paying for the individual to carry on, or potentially dissolving the position?
Yeah, and at that time, I mean, a lot can happen in five years, obviously. But, you know, we, as in any organization, through attrition, the time will come. It'll be a natural, if it's not funded any longer, through attrition, we'll just keep that spot reserved so we go back to our normal staffing.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay, so the first thing I want to do is thank Ms. Gray. It's the thing I love about this staffing, this offer, this gift, is that it's focused on youth. And it really, there really is something special happening in Menlo Park, and it really has to do with the corporate stewardship of this company, of Facebook. I mean, they've come forward with this from the laptops they've given away to our schools, from Ms. Sandberg, I just recently learned, has actually mentored youth in our Boys and Girls Club, to Mr. Zuckerberg himself, teaching in the school system. Something special is happening here. And I hope it's a statement to other jurisdictions about what is possible, about a value statement of a company. That being said, as well, I'm not comfortable with the recommendation of Mr. McIntyre tonight that we condition this acceptance of this money. This is a gift, and it's a jumpstart for us, really, to fund something that we frankly talked about funding ourselves to begin with. And that was, we were going to have to make a decision when we opened this community service center, this new police station in Bellhaven, how we were going to staff it. And there was a talk at that time that, well, maybe we'd pull someone administratively over from our police department over there and stick it in there. Maybe we'd have a halftime position. What's really happened is Facebook has come forward and said, "No, we're going to fund this for you and give you a jumpstart, and we're going to focus on the areas that really are what I think our community values most, and that's our kids." And in addition to that, this officer is going to do all of those other public safety requirements that we would expect of a public safety officer, but that's where we're going to start. So I'm not comfortable tonight conditioning the acceptance of this gift, that they give us more. I want to accept what they've given to us, and if they're gracious enough to offer us more, we can talk about it then. But I think, I personally don't think that we say, "Thank you, but no, we're not going to take it unless you give a little bit more." I think we should accept this tonight. We should pass it the way it is and let the city manager continue to talk about them, about what their intentions are.
Vice Mayor Carlton.
I have a question. I just want to make sure I understood, Mr. McIntyre. You said that you had spoken to Facebook, and they had offered to increase the amount, the cap, to 220, correct? Okay, so let me rephrase this, if I might, for you, that this isn't something that we agree to conditionally. This is something we agree to and thank them for their additional offer to cover the costs of paying this individual's salary.
So the person who makes this decision at Facebook is on vacation, and that's why it's conditioned?
And for that reason, I think we just accept this agreement the way it's been presented to us, the way that they've already agreed to it. And if they want to, if they want to come forward in generosity, offer us more, thank you. But what you've offered us already is outstanding. And I just, I'm not comfortable saying, "Well, no, we're going to wait until they sweeten it a little bit more." This is a gift.
But this was negotiated, right? I mean, I thought this was a conversation we've had for some time on this.
This was a conversation with the police department and officials from Facebook. And I think what may have gotten lost in the wash a little bit was some of the five-year projection and some of the PURS issues that my office was aware of and perhaps the PD was not at the time. So, all well-intended.
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't think anybody intends to look like they're asking for more money here at all. I mean, this is absolutely, the gratitude here is absolutely, you know, genuine. Very appreciative.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So I move to approve the agreement between the city of Menlo Park and Facebook, as stated here. Also, to authorize the... Also, to authorize the city manager that if indeed there is the approval to, to sign it, to amend and sign it, but certainly to approve it as it is currently with the authority to, to change it.
I second that.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
I just have a question. Just to be clear, this is a new position. And so, Mr. McIntyre, can you just elaborate a little bit more about what you were talking about on the amount that would cover the PURS amount? Because you were saying that you didn't, that the police chief didn't have all the information about the PURS amount and that you negotiated the 220?
Right. So, the PURS, the PURS rates will be going up over the next five years. And we, the staff has been clear about that with the council, with the community. At what rate those PURS rates go up, we don't know, particularly in the latter years. But we do know, as I said, PURS just announced new mortality rate, excuse me, an intention to increase rates to reflect the greater mortality, less mortality.
Greater longevity.
Greater mortality, thank you. Greater longevity, thank you. And so, but we don't know how that's going to affect us specifically. We don't have those numbers and all we were trying to do was build in enough cushion. And as I said, it's not a guaranteed 220 or even 200 a year, it's whatever the true cost of the position is going to be. And again, in the first year and likely even in the second year, it will likely not eclipse $200,000.
Okay. So, the 220 was just a cushion. It doesn't mean that you're spending that.
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
And I have another question though, just so I'm clear about the motion. Does the motion incorporate that?
The motion is to approve it as is, but subject to amendment to increase the cap to $220,000 a year if Facebook agrees to that language.
Okay. And, and Mr. McIntyre, is that what you had in mind? Okay. Good. Thank you. I'm clear.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Thumbs up. Thank you. We like it.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on to our next regular business item, item F2, accept the 2013-14 mid-year financial summary and approve recommended changes to the expenditure appropriation and revenue forecast. We have a staff presentation by Finance Director Drew Corbett.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller, members of the city council. Happy to be here tonight to present the mid-year budget update. So, before I get started on the content of my presentation, I actually want to skip right to the conclusion and give you sort of the key messages that I want you to take out of this presentation tonight. First key message is, we're doing very well financially. We've got a balanced budget, we've got very healthy reserves, and we have control of our expenditures. And I'll talk a lot more about what I mean by that later on when, when we're in the forecast section of this report. The second key message is vulnerabilities are always going to exist. A couple of them that I'll talk about tonight is our situation with XSE RAFAF and the pension situation. While those vulnerabilities are always going to be out there, whether it's pensions or XSE RAFAF or whatever else comes down the road, we're well-positioned to adjust. And we are well-positioned as a result of the fact that we do have good control over our expenditures. And again, I'll, I'll talk more about that later. But those are really the key takeaways. So, on to the bulk of the presentation, which is part of the staff report. I'm going to talk about general fund revenues, then get into expenditures, then talk a little bit about what we've done so far with the 10-year forecast, which is very preliminary at this point. Talk a little bit about what adjustments have been made to other funds and then talk about recommendations and next steps. So, getting right into revenues, property tax, by far our largest general fund source of revenue, almost a third of our general fund revenue is property tax. We're up over our preliminary estimate by 760,000. That's almost entirely the result of getting a full share of XSE RAFAF this year. That's a very volatile revenue source. So, typically what we've done is only budgeted a half share, which is what we did for 13-14 initially. We learned in January that we would actually get a full share, so we've increased our budget projection for property tax. Sales tax, 13% of the general fund. Unfortunately, I dropped that forecast down $200,000 from the original forecast. Has nothing to do with, with activity, it has everything to do with the triple flip. Our triple flip backfill is paid for by ERAF funds from last year. There were insufficient ERAF funds to cover that, to cover that liability, so we don't have those funds. So, we're, we are short this year. I'm projecting we're going to be short. We're still going to have sales tax growth despite this setback, so that's a good thing. So, it does show the economy is healthy, that our local 1% is healthy. These are things beyond our control with respect to the triple flip. TOT is doing great. So, 9% of our general fund, bumping up the forecast by over $350,000. This fiscal year is the first full fiscal year of the 12%. We're seeing great occupancies, great room rates. We had a fantastic first half of the year. And if things keep on going as they are and there's no, no indication that they won't for the remainder of the year, we should have a very good year as far as TOT goes. Licenses and permits. This year, it's 14% of the general fund. In a typical year, it wouldn't quite, it wouldn't be quite that high, but we are seeing significant development permitting activity. I've actually adjusted the budget up $2.1 million over the original forecast. That's about almost 50% increase over the original, over the original forecast. Now, with those revenues comes, comes expenditures, all right? Those are, those are payments for services that we need to provide. We're going to do a lot of it this year, but also some of those services are going to bleed into next year. So, there are corresponding expenditures that go with those revenues. But, but just the fact that we increased it by 2.1, which again is almost a 50% increase, shows the level of activity that's going on right now in the city. So, charges for services. What these are, these are your recreation fees, there's some planning activity in here, your library fees, 17% of the general fund, a significant portion of our general fund is charges for services. I have dropped that projection down $200,000. Now, I do want to point out, though, we're still projecting 7% growth over last year's actuals. We're just not coming quite as high as, as we thought we would, but 7% growth is still a significant level of growth for this particular revenue source. And then, the only, last thing I wanted to point out on the revenue side was the transfers and other. This is where some of our one-time money goes. The Hamilton, the sale of the Hamilton property for $772,000, that was initially anticipated last year. We actually, the sale closed this fiscal year, we received the money this fiscal year. But as you may recall, the plan for the funds, for the proceeds from the sale of Hamilton were earmarked to go into our general fund reserve. So, to the extent we got this money this year, the plan is still put that money into the reserve to increase the reserves. So, on the expenditure side, the mid-year adjusted budget is $44.2 million for the general fund. So, that's up 1.8 million over the adopted budget. And that's predominantly the result of actions that have already been taken by council over the course of the year. The largest one was a $1.1 million adjustment increase to the, to the community development budget for contract plan checkers and inspectors to deal with the significant development activity. There was also the $400,000 carryover of encumbrances from the previous fiscal year. So, that was the bulk of the adjustments that have been made so far this year. There are a couple of requested revisions as a part of this mid-year report. About $43,000 to fund a part-time classroom at the Bell Haven Child Development Center. That's funded by a grant from the state, so it'd be cost-neutral to the city. There's also $4,800 from the Library Foundation that we'd like to appropriate to do a monthly teen night at the library. So, those are, those are the, just the two adjustments that would be part of the mid-year request for the general fund. Now, the next line item, $750,000 in anticipated savings this year. So, as part of my evaluation for the mid-year report, I looked at how, where spending was through halfway through the year, looked at years past, what the run rates were in terms of actuals versus budget. And I'm making a broad sort of estimate at this point that I think the general fund's going to come in about $750,000 below the current appropriation. My goal tonight is to give you an idea about what I think the overall surplus is going to be. And in order to really do that, I think I have to indicate that we, we are going to save some money this year over our budgeted appropriation. So, I did want to include that because that's going to be a significant factor in what our ending surplus is likely to be. So, in summary, current revenue budget's $45.9 million. Our adjusted expenditure appropriation is $44.2 million, but within that, within that appropriation, I do expect we're going to save $750,000, which would give us a gross operating surplus of 2.5 million. And as I mentioned, we're bringing in an extra $2.1 million in permitting revenues, but we're only going to spend, expect to spend about 1.1 of that. We've only appropriated an additional 1.1. So, we do need to set $1 million aside of that additional revenue to cover that permitting activity that will need to take place next year. So, I did net that out of our gross operating surplus. And so, I'm projecting at this point that our, our net operating surplus this year will be $1.5 million. And that does include the $772,000 for the sale of the Hamilton property. So, on to the forecast. I did include a very preliminary update of the general fund 10-year forecast in this, as part of this report. And what I factored in at this point is all the things that we know that have happened, as well as any major assumption changes that we've made. This will continue to be refined and revised up until the point at which the city manager delivers his recommended budget. So, there's a lot more work to do on the 10-year forecast. Specifically with respect to revenues, first thing was to revise projections based on, on what's happening in the current year. So, for, for example, for transient occupancy tax and for utility users tax, I looked at where we were this year and used that to really set a new baseline for the go-forward for those revenue sources. For property tax, with the high amount of development activity, I think our current projections were a little low with respect to what, what we'd expect growth to be. I've increased the next three years, 5% a year, the assessed valuation as a placeholder. One of the things I'm going to talk about on next slide is kind of what we're going to be looking at with respect to property tax revenues for the forecast over the next two months as we prepare the recommended budget. XSE RAFAF, I mentioned, this is a very volatile and uncertain revenue source. So, what I've done is I've budgeted, or the current forecast has 50% through 16-17 and then I've dropped it to zero thereafter. This is a very difficult one. It, it's constantly under scrutiny, it's constantly something that, that is under the threat of being eliminated, but yet we seem to get it every year. So, I'm trying to strike the right balance between not cutting it off right away and making service-level decisions based on something that we may, that we may still get and we're likely to still get in the near term, but also not taking it all the way out. Because I, I do think it is very dangerous to assume that we can, that we can keep that in our operating baseline revenue in perpetuity. I, I do think there is enough scrutiny that, that it is likely that at some point it may go away. And so, trying to strike the right balance. So, I do have it in for several years out, but have taken it out at this point, or after that. And it will give us time to adjust if we do in fact lose that revenue source. And then, the other thing that's in the 10-year forecast is just the above-normal permitting activity for the next couple of years before dropping down to a more sustainable baseline. Terms of what my focus areas are going to be for the forecast within, over the next couple of months with the recommended budget, is really, really looking hard at property tax and trying to refine the projections to incorporate the impact of specific large-scale projects on our assessed valuation. There's a lot of things in process right now and they will have a, a positive impact on our property tax. We really want to try to refine the projections to identify what that exactly means for the city in terms of, of property tax increases. Also, I want to look at sales tax and look, look at the growth rates there. It's a, that's a volatile revenue source. I think I want to look at the 4% to see if, I think that's a good number in relation to what our inflation-adjusted sales tax has been historically and, and really look at that on the go-forward to see if, if the growth rate is, is the right rate to use. And then, we also need to incorporate the Marriott Hotel TOT. Right now, we're just looking at when the timing is of that coming in and kind of what that's going to mean for, for revenues, but that should be a, a significant boost to the ongoing TOT revenue. On the expenditure side, the forecast is largely unchanged for now. And the reason for that is, we're going to set our revenue budget. And because expenditures, for the most part, are under council control, we're going to be able to turn, turn the dials on our expenditure assumptions based on what our revenues look like. So, I talk about expenditures being on, under council control. What I mean by that is personnel costs make up 70% of the general fund, right? So, those are the ones we really need to pay attention to. Salaries, we're in a situation where we don't have any contracts that have automatic inflators in them. Everything's negotiable. There's no situation where, well, city X got a 5% raise, so therefore our employees get a 5% raise. Some cities are tied into contracts like that. We're not. Salaries are controlled in that sense. Same with healthcare. We don't have any automatic increases. It's all, it's all negotiated. Now, PURS obviously is not as much in our control. We have the 50% cost share, but we have the fixed rate with the, we have the 50% cost share, excuse me, with our miscellaneous employees. We have the 3% fixed with the police. So, it's not as much in our control. But point is, is enough of the, the expenditures are under our control. If we need to turn certain dials with respect to our expenditure assumptions, we have the flexibility to do so. And, and that's a great place to be in. So, CalPERS action, we talked a little bit about that with respect to the last agenda item. So, CalPERS recently, just less than, or two weeks ago, the board approved changes to the demographic assumptions. The largest one is with respect to the mortality assumptions. So, good news for the males of the world is we're expected to live an extra two years, whereas the females are only getting 18 months out of the deal. Significant rate impact, okay? And it's a, and it's a broad range right now. 3.1% to 6.5% of pay for our miscellaneous employees and 5.3% to 9.3% of pay for safety. So, to put that into dollar terms, citywide, not just general fund, but citywide, on the low end, that's $750,000. On the high end, that's $1.5 million. So, significant impact. It's going to be phased in over five years, starting in 16-17. And right now, I'm working with John Bartel, our consulting actuary, to develop a forecast for, for rates that will incorporate this on top of the increases that are already in process. So, within a couple of weeks, I'll have information about what our new forecast rates are expected to be. And it will incorporate not just the bad news with the increase to the rates, but it'll also factor in the fact that over the next several years, we'll be bringing more people on under the second tier, more people on under the PEPRA, which will help offset some of these rate increases. And these, these rates will be, will be baked into the 10-year forecast. So, other funds, general fund CIP, no change to the $2.3 million transfer for, for infrastructure maintenance, two mid-year modifications being requested. One is to defund a, the city admin energy project, the audit that was paid for, not needing city funds, so that money is available. And it's being recommended that those funds are used for a climate action plan, funding plan, in the amount of $40,000. It'd be a one-for-one swap of money. And then, the second would be the acceleration of the purchase of the portable stage for the community services department. That project is funded in the amount of $52,500 in next year's CIP. So, the recommendation is to move that funding forward and appropriate it this year and also based on the initial quotes that have been received, to add an additional $35,000 from the RENF and LO fund to, to cover the remaining portion of that project. Water, increased water consumption this year, as you might imagine, as a result of the droughts, revenues are being adjusted upward 1.3 million. We are purchasing more water. So, the expenditure appropriation is being requested to, to be moved upward 1.05 million. In terms of the capital improvement fund, again, increased water sales have brought in additional revenues more than expected, so those revenues are being adjusted upward by $200,000. And then, construction impact fees, with the amount of development that's occurring, we're seeing a significant increase in the, these particular mitigation fees, so we're revising upward by $600,000 due to the heavy development activity. Obviously, these funds will need to be spent towards mitigating the impact of that construction activity, so, so, but this will be a big help to the impact on city streets as a result of construction. So, recommendation, next steps, one of the recommendations made in the report was to approve the changes to the expenditure appropriation and revenue forecast. And then, next step is to develop the city manager's fiscal year 2014-15 recommended budget, prioritizing the funding based on council goals. And I started with the conclusion that I'm And I started with a conclusion, but I'm going to end with a conclusion because it's really important to me. We're doing well financially. Balanced budget, very, very healthy reserves, and we have control of our expenditures. To the extent we need to turn the dials up and down, we can do so. We have a lot of flexibility and, and it's, it's a great place to be. And again, vulnerabilities will always exist, but because of our control of our expenditures, we're in a great position to be flexible and, and to be able to adjust. And so that's a great position for us to be in. So with that, I conclude my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. At this time, we're going to go ahead and take public comment. If there's any public comment cards, if there are not, council member Klein.
Yeah, thank you. Very well done on the presentation.
Thank you.
Breaking into these pieces. I guess the decision is whether we make, you know, agree to say thanks for the extra money, right? It's kind of the point. I think the bigger point is, I remember four years ago having meetings like this that weren't quite like this at all. And I remember having almost like these panic-ridden arguments up here about the world is going to end soon and we have to do everything we can to make sure the world doesn't end soon. So, you know, we have to cut, cut, cut and move money. And I remember those discussions, but I would say caution the same way here to say, great, 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 but let's manage ourselves appropriately. And I think you've said that. Look, the outlook is great today, but it's not going to be that way forever. But we're in the opportune moment here to manage ourselves into success even in a hard time and take advantage of it, which I really, really respect that highly. And I think you've done a good job communicating that. So I'm all in. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council member Otaki.
So I certainly echo council member Klein's appreciation, Drew, for your, for your hard work and excellent presentation. And certainly, this is good news. I wanted to make sure, one of the takeaways I have from the mid-year report is that, yeah, we're doing great, but a lot of these are one-time items, correct? So out of this 1.5 million net, about $750,000 has to do with the EREF, which I completely agree with you. You know, you don't, you're absolutely right in future years to only assume half, you know, just, it's just too volatile, right? So it's good news, but it's one time. And then the other is, the, the other large amount is the job vacancies of 750. I saw that in there. While the 2.1 million of, of project fees is great news, they come with expenses that will be spread out over two years. So it's not a net contributor to the, to the bottom line.
That's right.
And I appreciate that you actually moved that 1 million and, and in effect, set it aside so that, I think that's very smart. But I, I just wanted to make sure. I kind of looked at it as, hey, this is great news, but it's one time. Don't go out and, you know, throw a party. It's just, it's, you know, keep in mind that this is sort of a, did I, am I inferring that correctly?
There are. I mean, there's certainly some one-time aspects. Obviously, the sale of Hamilton property. If you look at our net operating surplus is of 1.5, well, half of that is one-time money.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay.
The, the XSE RAF, it's, it's, it's difficult, but we do sort of consider it as, as this one-time ongoing money. It seems to be one time every year, and after a while, you, you have to start factoring it in. But it is, it is something that is a concern if it goes away. But on the other side, you know, the, the triple-flip issue on sales tax is one time, theoretically. I mean, I would not expect that to happen again. And it's possible that we will get that money back down the road. But, so there is that, that one-time aspect of, of a sales tax hit that, that really has nothing to do with what's actually happening in Menlo Park. So it, it does, there is some one-time, there are some one-time revenues in there. I think it is, as always is the case, we are doing well, but it, it's always best to proceed cautiously. But, but my bigger point, again, I don't think I can emphasize it enough, we've, we've got flexibility on the expenditure side because we're not locked in to long-term deals that force us into, to certain, certain scenarios that cause us to increase compensation. That allows us to be flexible with the fact that revenues are going to be volatile. Certain revenues are going to be volatile.
Okay, yeah. And so in fact, that leads me to questions now about the forecast, the, I'm not even going to go 10 years, but just in the, in the next couple of years. Because I know you'll be bringing that back to us as part of the budget, and I wanted to, to provide some input. I'm, I'm a little nervous about showing the 5%, the 5% property tax increases. That may be valid. I think the, the more valid approach is what you suggested about is looking at certain projects and how that'll impact. My nervousness about, about the increase of 5% is certainly the last couple of years we've, we've had that. But, you know, we're starting to see interest rates increasing, you know, how will that impact? And, and while it would be great if that turns out to be the case, I, I'm not, again, in this sort of caution, I'm not sure you want to, you want to bank on all of the different tax categories hitting at some sort of a clip, including a 5%. So you may want to tweak that down a little bit to give, give us some room to make sure we're not over, being over-optimistic on, on that, the revenue side.
Sure. And it would never be my intention to be overly optimistic across support. I think on the property tax, I, I am bullish on property tax because there is a lag in when things are actually, when something gets built and then when it actually hits our assessed value roll. So I mean, you see a lot of this development that, that's up and running now, and it's just starting to get on the roll. So I, I think there is some potential for growth above norm there. But we are, again, we are going to look very carefully at, at specific projects. And I did mention on the sales tax, I mean, that's an area where we, where we really have to look to see if the growth rates there are, are at an appropriate level or if those need to be pulled, pulled in a little bit. But, but that's all, all under evaluation. But certainly, your point's well taken.
Okay. And then the, the question then I have on the expenditure side is, so what assumptions did you make on the expenses side? Because the, it shows a negative in 2018. So then that certainly means that there's got to be, and, and I wanted to certainly encourage you to, I mean, I, conversely, on the, on the revenue side, I would say the same thing on the, on the inflation that you're assuming, maybe kind of keep it tempered. And, and then layer on some of the other, you know, issues that you know when you get more data on PERS, for example. I think that's good information and data to put in it.
Absolutely. So the PERS, the PERS will be fully incorporated. And I think the point of showing the forecast the way I showed it this evening, because I, I did make a drastic change in it, whereas I took XSE RAF out after three years, and that's when you saw it going negative. And I think if we were in the situation where we did lose XSE RAF after three years, we would need to, to tweak down our assumptions for expenditure increases in order to accommodate that, right? I mean, if we lose that, if we lose that as a revenue source, that changes some of the expenditure assumptions that we could make. So that, that'll be a factor. The PERS will be a factor. The additional TOT with the new hotel will be a factor. Those will all be incorporated in.
Great.
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Council member Keith.
Well, it's a great report. I think the press should have stayed for this. This is fabulous to see. I wanted to ask a couple of follow-up questions on the Marriott. I know the TOT is looking strong with our other hotels, but when, when is the Marriott expected to be occupied? If you know.
I just sent an email from them today, and they're planning on opening by the end of the year, calendar year. So, and then you could, you could probably anticipate a ramp up, whatever that would mean, until full occupancy.
Okay. Good. Thank you for that follow-up. And, and just looking at a couple of the things, it's already been highlighted, but the one-time fees, you know, that's always the fear, the one-time fees, because we know they won't be continuing. And I wanted to ask you about the water also. I noticed it was a, flipping through here, on your water operations fund and in the staff report, on page 12, you talk about the increase from 1 million to 6 million for this. Is that right?
I increased it by 1 million, up to 6 million.
Okay. So I wanted to just make clear, because I saw that number and I thought, I wasn't sure that, so you're saying it was just increased by a million?
Yes.
Okay. When I originally saw it, I, good, that's good to know. Thank you for that clarification. And, and I appreciate your information on the, on the CalPERS, the rate impacts. I think that's really important that they met two weeks ago and modified those rates. And this does go hand-in-hand with what we were just talking about on the previous item, for safety going up 5.3% to 9.3%. So thanks for highlighting that as well so that we're kept abreast. Thank you.
Vice mayor Carl.
I just have a couple of questions. On page 263, you mentioned $59,000 for the 500 L Communal Real Traffic Study. Is that not offset by, I thought Stanford was paying for that? Or is that a different study?
No, but my point is, is even if something is offset by revenues, we still have to appropriate the funds to spend it.
Sure. But usually, usually you make a note that this is offset by, so that's why I was just clarifying.
Okay, if I didn't, my apologies.
No, that's fine. And then I was also confused. You talk about a $52,500 replacement of a stage, and then you talk about a $35,000 replacement for the stage. Is this an $87,000 stage?
Yes.
Why are they divided out into two separate costs?
The original budget was for a $52,500 stage. When they wanted to bring it up, they started looking into what it would actually cost and determined that the cost was going to be closer to $87,000.
It's more than 50%. What, is it a different stage or did they just guess really?
I'm going to ask for some help from our community services director.
Sorry, I was just wondering what the difference was, if they decided to do something extra or?
So this project was originally included in the CIP several years ago. And those were the prices that were quoted to us at the time.
Okay.
We, since then, apparently, prices have increased that dramatically.
Wow. Okay. And talking about, you know, planning contingencies for things that can happen, I heard you say that you're really looking at property tax. And I know that property tax is a majority of the tax funds that come into our city. If by chance, the, the specific plan is not upheld, we can assume a significant loss in revenues for both the impact fees and the increase in property taxes that would go with some of the planned development. Have you taken this into consideration at all or is, is that too far in the, in the future at this point to?
It's too far in the future. It hasn't, those specific impacts have not been incorporated into the general baseline projection.
Because I remember the city council meeting last week, we were talking about at least $100,000 per development going into the school and at least that going into the city per, per each of the developments. And so it's pretty significant.
Right. And at this point, that's not, that's not in the projection. What the forecast has is just general assessed valuation increases without, you know, without factoring in specific projects.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we accept this and then, you know, take it with the changes and accept the changes as well. Sorry, that's pretty, that's pretty bungled. Let me just go back to this report, do this the appropriate way, because it was written so nicely and thoughtfully. Ah, we move that we accept this financial summary and approve the recommended changes to the expenditure appropriation and revenue forecast.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we have no city manager's report tonight. We have no written communications. We have no informational items. Do we have any council member reports? Council member Keith.
Briefly, just to let you know that at our last San Francisco, Keweenaw Creek Joint Powers Board meeting, we learned that the California Water Board was denying our permit with, without prejudice. But it's a, it's a large setback. And it's a serious setback. They're the only agency to do this. All the multitude of other agencies have approved the permits. So we're holding a meeting on March 12th at 4 o'clock here to figure out how, how we're going to deal with this.
Is that related to the Phase 1 construction?
It is.
From the Bay?
Yeah, from the Bay to 101.
The currently existing project.
It is. And it's very questionable about the reasoning about why they're doing this. So we're going to have a meeting here on the 12th at 4 o'clock to discuss that, and I wanted to let you know. And the other thing you'll see, I think Adina Levin just sent an email to all of us about the Dunbar and Rail. So it looks like there's discussion about to taking the 91 million that went for BART to Warm Springs. They're looking at whether or not they want to make that, that loan that would not be paid back. So it wouldn't really kill the Dunbar and Rail. So I think that there'll be a meeting of the Dunbar and Rail Joint Power to figure out how to respond to that pretty quickly, because I think there's an initial meeting tomorrow.
Okay, great. Any other council member reports this evening? No, we're going to move on to public comment number two. Under public comment number two, the public, if unable to address the council on non-agenda items during public comment number one, may do so at this time. Each person is limited to three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or jurisdiction in which you live. Do we have any public comments for public number two? No. So we're going to go ahead and adjourn. We're adjourning this evening in memory of Frank Carney. Francis Frank J. Carney died on February 17th, 2014, following a brief illness. Frank was born on October 26th, 1940, in Queens, New York. A graduate of Iona College in 1962, he served six years in the Navy. He worked as a probation officer and family court mediator for San Mateo County. A long-term resident of Menlo Park, Frank was actively involved in many community projects. He served on the Environmental Quality Commission from 1998 to 2006. He is survived by his spouse, Margaret, sons Patrick, Juliette, and Kevin, and married to Anne and four grandchildren. Friends and family are invited to a celebration of his life on Sunday, March 30th, 2014, at 2:30 PM at the Lucy Stern Community Center in Palo Alto. In lieu of flowers, donations may be made to JW Hospitality House, 3850 Homestead Road, Santa Clara, California, 95051. And we are adjourned.